Good evening, everybody. I think we're gonna get started with the the commission hearing. Good evening, Director Palommi, commissioners and members of the public. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item of business is to roll call, please.
Commissioner Lopez.
President.
Commissioner Cuevas is absent. Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Lomeli.
Present.
And Chairperson Medina.
Present.
And we do have a quorum. We would proceed with tonight's meeting.
Our next item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is to see if there are any corrections to the agenda.
Good evening, Chair members of the commission. There are no corrections to the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you so much. Next item would be the public comments. Can you help me read that?
Yes, Mr. Chair. At this time, the public may address the Planning Commission on any items listed on the agenda, including non-agenda items that are within the Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting or entertaining extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Please show courtesy to others while providing public comments and direct all comments to the chairperson. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Palommi. Do we have any public comments?
We do have four speaker cards for item number two.
Thank you so much. And we'll take those items once we take item number two. Next item on the agenda would be any staff communications.
There are no staff communications tonight.
Thank you. Moving right along, the following item would be the approval of minutes for the Planning Commission from August 5, 2025. Can I entertain a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll go ahead and motion to approve the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting held on June 17, 2025.
Sorry. That would be August 5, right? Just correction.
Oh, on August 5, 2025.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you so much. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Morales.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Lomeli.
Aye.
Chairperson Medina.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. Moving right along, we're now in our one and only item, item as part of the public hearing.
Yes, item two on tonight's agenda pertains to the consideration of resolution number 14-25, which would approve a conditional use permit for a private art gallery associated and related amenities at the property at 1401 North Montebello Boulevard. And the resolution also recommends that the city council approve the draft development agreement attached to the resolution. Planning Manager Viviana Esparza will be presenting the staff report on this item tonight, and the applicant also has a presentation that they would like to provide. So at this time, I'll turn it over to the planning manager. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairperson, members of the Planning Commission. The item before you tonight is the 4A CUP, case number PC-2024-0012-CUP, to allow the applicant Ultimate Health Services Corporation to establish and operate a private art gallery within an existing commercial unit in the Montebello Town Square Shopping Center located at 1401 North Montebello Boulevard. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for CUP PC-2024-0012-CUP for the operation of its proposed art gallery, which will be located on the second floor of an existing commercial unit that's located within the city's C2 zoning district. Pursuant to Appendix A, Index of Primary Uses of the Montebello Municipal Code, approval of a conditional use permit is required for new assembly buildings and uses within the city's C2 general commercial zone. In addition to the CUP request, the applicant, the Planning Commission will consider recommending that the city council approve Development Agreement number 03-24 between the City of Montebello and Ultimate Health Services Corporation in connection with the approval of the proposed art gallery. To provide you with background on this project, on this particular application, on May 11, 2020, Ultimate was issued a city business license for the purpose of operating an administrative business and professional office use at the project site. On July 10, 2024, the applicant filed an application for a proposed private art gallery at the project site and was issued a deemed incomplete letter in connection with its initial submittal. On August 21, 2024, the applicant resubmitted supplemental information staff had requested in its initial deemed incomplete letter. After review of the documents provided, planning staff issued a deemed complete letter on the same day. As part of this public hearing, notices were mailed out to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property and were also published in the Montebello News. The project site is outlined in red in the slide before you and is, as mentioned previously, it's located within the city's C2 zoning, zoning with a planned development designation. The project site is surrounded by other commercially zoned properties and uses to the north, east, and west, and is across from the Metro Heights Residential Development to the south. The proposed use is compatible with surrounding land uses and is consistent with the intent of both the city's zoning ordinance and general plan. The entire town, the entire, I'm sorry, the entire Montebello Town Square site encompasses approximately 251,000 square feet, and Ultimate currently occupies an approximately 105,000 square foot commercial unit within that shopping center. The first floor of the tenant space measures approximately 75,000 square feet and is currently utilized for Ultimate's administrative office functions. The second floor measures approximately 30,000 square feet, and as part of its proposal, 15,668 square feet of the second floor mezzanine will be converted to an art gallery and associated accessory uses. In addition to the interior improvements, the proposal includes several site modifications, such as the construction of a new trash enclosure, installation of an ADA accessible parking space, and the construction of an entrance canopy. Once the art gallery is established, it's proposed to operate Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., with the potential to host events outside of a regular business hours on various days of the week. The site plan in the slide provides an overview of the entire shopping center, and outlined in red is the project area for the proposed conditional use permit. As part of its review, staff has determined that the proposed use complies with the parking requirements set forth in Chapter 17.52 of the city's zoning ordinance. Pursuant to the city's off-street parking standards, a total of 367 parking spaces are required to accommodate both the existing and proposed uses at the project site. The shopping center provides a total of 1,225 onsite parking spaces for its commercial tenants. Therefore, adequate parking will continue to be available throughout the shopping center to support the proposed use. And the slide before you shows the interior layout of the second floor where the proposed art gallery and accessory uses will be located. The proposed use, this proposed CUP qualifies for a Class 1 categorical exemption under the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, Guideline Section 15301, existing facilities. As proposed, the CUP for an art gallery would not expand the existing footprint of the structure at the site, and the proposed improvements to the site include minor interior changes, such as adding partition walls, as well as other minor site improvements. Additionally, the Planning Commission's recommendation that the city council approve Development Agreement number 03-24 in conjunction with the CUP qualifies for a statutory exemption from CEQA under Section 15061B3, the common sense exemption, which applies to projects where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility the activity may have a significant effect on the environment. Since approving a development agreement does not in itself result in physical changes to the environment, it can be determined with certainty that the proposed action will not have a significant environmental impact. Now, at this point, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution conditionally approving CUP number PC-2024-0012-CUP to allow the establishment and operation of a private art gallery along with accessory storage spaces on the second floor of an existing commercial unit in the Montebello Town Square Shopping Center located at 1401 North Montebello Boulevard, and adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve Development Agreement number 03-24 between the City of Montebello and Ultimate Health Services Corporation, and making the related findings that the proposed project is consistent with the Montebello general plan, and determine and find that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15301, existing facilities, and Section 15061B3, common sense exemption. Now, this concludes my presentation, and if the Planning Commission has any questions for staff, I'll gladly answer those, and we also have the applicant here with us tonight to answer any questions you may have of them.
Thank you so much. Before we move any further ahead, I just want to make a quick note for the record. Commissioner Cuevas is present. Is he with us?
Thank you, and I apologize to my fellow commissioners, staff, and members of the audience for being late.
Matter of problem. Thank you, Victor. In that case, should we hear from the applicant? Should we, do we need to open public record? I mean, the public hearing?
First, we need to address whether there are any questions regarding the staff's presentation. And if there are no questions, then we can open the public hearing and proceed with, with hearing from the applicant.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Any questions, commissioners, for staff? No? Okay. Here are no questions for staff. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public comment. Public hearing, sorry.
And I believe we have a presentation. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Can you state your name?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. My name is Verenice Nunez Constant, and I am with Ultimate Health Services. I serve as a Senior Vice President of Government Relations and External Affairs. Thank you very much. So, good evening to all of the honorable Planning Commissioners, Chair Medina. It's nice to meet you and see you all, city staff, of course, and members of the public. Again, my name is Verenice, Senior VP of Government Relations for Ultimate Health Services. I really just want to start by thanking you for your leadership and your continued commitments to the arts, culture, and community well-being here in the city of Montebello. Montebello has long celebrated its people. This city understands that art and culture reflect who we are and bring us together. We are here tonight to respectfully ask for your support and approval of the ALTA, a dedicated cultural space that will serve as the home for Chicano and Latino art and a welcoming gathering place for the entire community. There we go. For more than 55 years, Ultimate has stood for one simple truth. Everyone deserves access to healthcare delivered with dignity, respect, and cultural understanding. Through the decades, we have learned that healing extends beyond the exam room. Health is physical, it's emotional, it's cultural, and it's collective. From clinics to community programs, through our nationally recognized Ultimate Arts Collection, we bring health and culture together so that every patient feels welcomed and seen. At Ultimate, health is more than a medical appointment, as I mentioned. True healing happens when people are surrounded by spaces that reflect who they are and where they come from. That is why art is part of our care model at Ultimate. Our collection lives in our clinics, our offices, and community spaces. It welcomes patients the moment that they walk in and sends a clear message that they belong. They belong here and within our clinics and offices. The ALTA is the next step in this journey. It will be a place where art and healing come together, where artists and community members can gather, create, and find comfort in cultural expression. Though one of its function is an office center to coordinate Ultimate's art programming, the ALTA is more than just an office space. It will be a living, breathing art space with gallery exhibitions, arts workshops, and educational programming that will engage residents of all ages. It will be a place for families, artists, students, and anyone seeking inspiration and connection. It really is a place that is designed for people and the residents of Montebello and the surrounding communities. The ALTA is located, as you heard, at 14, oh, let me go to the next slide. The ALTA is located at 1401 North Montebello Road within the Montebello Town Center, Town Square Shopping Center. The ALTA is located completely within the existing structure, surrounded by ample parking and retail and commercial uses. As you've heard from the city staff tonight, the ALTA will encompass approximately 15,700 square feet in total with designated spaces for offices, art storage, an art gallery, and then an ancillary space as well, where we will host community and educational events. Again, we are respectfully requesting your approval of the CUP, the Development Agreement, and of the Class 1 CEQA exemption to make portions of the space open to the public for special events and for the ALTA's art and cultural programs. The gallery exhibitions will highlight the richness of Chicano and Latino art. The ALTA will be open and accessible to Montebello residents, local artists, and visitors. It will be a place to experience beauty, learn something new, and take pride in the stories that define our communities. I think I went too far. The gallery exhibitions will highlight the richness of Chicano and Latino art. The, oh, I already said this part, I think. Excuse me. Got a little lost there for a second. Through the Ultimate Arts Collection, thousands of works by Chicano, Latino, and Latin American artists are displayed across our health centers to create spaces that are welcoming, hopeful, and filled with pride. We also partner with local artists to bring workshops and classes into our communities. We have also integrated art into our programs for older adults, where creative expression supports mental health, builds connection, and strengthens memory. Across our organization, we see how art transforms a space and uplifts people. And I can't see the slide number, so is that slide number eight? Okay, slide number eight. The ALTA is part of this mission. By opening this space to the public, we can offer arts workshops and educational programs for students, families, and city residents. This project arrives at a meaningful moment. Many families in and around Montebello are navigating uncertainty, a fear from the impact of the heightened immigration enforcement activities. In times like these, spaces that nurture belonging and pride are vital. The ALTA will serve as an anchor of hope and resilience. It will offer a place to gather, find strength in the community, and heal through creativity. We are proud to bring this space to life in partnership with the city of Montebello. Montebello, and you all have always celebrated its people, its culture. The city's artistic tradition is strong. From the Montebello's Art Walk downtown to the Armenian Genocide Martyrs Monument to murals and cultural festivals across the city, Montebello shows that art is essential to civic life and deeply integrated into the city's identity. The ALTA will carry this tradition forward. It's a natural extension of Montebello's investments in culture, public art, and creative spaces. The ALTA is more than a building. It's a cultural hub. It will bring people together. It will attract visitors from across the region, foster cultural pride, and strengthen Montebello's identity as a center of Chicano and Latino art. For us, the Ultimate is a great example of a true public-private partnership. It demonstrates what can happen when a nonprofit and a city share a vision for community well-being and work together to bring that vision to life. And just second to last slide here, Ultimate is committed to this collaboration. We will continue working closely with city staff to ensure this project aligns with Montebello's goals and delivers lasting public benefits. Some of the project benefits include, but are not limited to, a $200,000 public benefit issued to the cities for its investment in the community, making the ALTA available to the city's use for civic events, and expanding access to the arts by opening the private art gallery and collaborative spaces to the public for special events and for programming related to arts and culture. As a proud partner of the community, Ultimate is pleased to report that these benefits will be provided in partnership with the city of Montebello and as part of our shared goals of driving sustainable and meaningful impacts through creative spaces and through celebration of culture and the arts. So, in closing, together, we can build a space that reflects the beauty, strength, and diversity of this city. Thank you for your leadership, your partnership, and your commitment to Montebello's future. We are proud to report that we have secured support from 31 people and organizations, including civic leaders, business owners, and members of the community. I believe you all have a copy of this letter of support included in your packet tonight. Tonight, together with these 31 signatories, we respectfully ask for your approval of the CUP, the Development Agreement, and the Class 1 CEQA exemption so we can move forward and bring the ALTA to life. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, do we have any comments or questions for the applicant?
I have a comment if I may. I just want, just want to highlight something you said and was really touching, that part of your objective is to treat everyone with dignity, respect, and provide cultural understanding. So, thank you.
Absolutely. It is definitely, it's not just something that we say. It is something that is in our care model, that we have baked into all the spaces and places at Ultimate. And if you look at our leadership from the top all the way to the front line, we reflect the communities that we are in.
And we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments?
I'd also like to say I am very happy to see something like this come about in Montebello. I don't think we have something of this nature as of right now. So, I think this would be a great addition to our community. So, thank you for investing in our community.
Wonderful. And if I could just comment, I know that was not a question, but one of the other things around the region is that this is also an arts desert. And so, we will be bringing this to the city, but also hopefully serving kind of a regional approach and making it more accessible for folks to access art and participate in the art. Of course.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Lomeli actually took the words right out of my mouth. Like, I also welcome this, this type of investment, really, in, in, in Montebello. An investment that, that shows the value in our, in our diversity, which is something that's been in, in question as of late. But I did have one quick question. I'm wondering as if the, the programming is gonna have some input from community. I think you've kind of touched on it on, or talked about it in your, in your presentation, but I wonder if you can give us maybe more of an idea of how that, how that program is gonna look like.
Absolutely. So, we at Ultimate always co-create directly with our communities. And so, one of the things that we're working on already is with the Montebello Unified School District to access some arts dollars that were passed in a proposition a couple of years ago. And so, we want to co-create a program around art and activism and start bringing in different types of workshops. We will do the same with our local artists. We already work with them. They come into our clinics. They work with our seniors. They help them paint and create beautiful art. One of the big things that we've done in our clinics are this program around art murals within our clinics, and those are co-created with our patients and with the artists within the clinics. And so, we will co-create. We look forward to the opportunity to work not only with the school district, but with city staff to identify what some of those partnerships could be.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I know we have a lot of talent here in Montebello.
Yes, absolutely.
Before we hear from the additional speakers, I did want to note for the record, and I think you mentioned it already, we do have two letters, both in support. One with the 31 signatories that you mentioned, and another from Ultimate.
Yes.
Also in support of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions?
No, absolutely. This is such a great opportunity also reflecting, as I was hearing the commissioners and, you know, and Ms. Verenice. This is such a beautiful opportunity for families to come together as well and to know about our roots, right, from this diversity of cultures as well, and the revitalization of our community too, especially in these times. So, absolutely, this is a great opportunity for that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you for the time.
Actually, one, one more.
So sorry.
No problem.
I, I know you mentioned that, that there's a
I, I know you mentioned that, um, that there's, uh, um, hours of operation you guys will be hosting, and you guys will be hosting events and working with the city. Um, would this gallery be open to the public on a general basis, like during your business hours? Is it something that you will charge the community, or is this something for free? Just wanted to, you know, I'm sure the residents will probably have that question too.
Of course. Um, so it's a private gallery, so we will primarily be open with staff, uh, not hours mentioned. Uh, we will have special events, which we will plan with the city, um, and we will make it available, um, in partnership with the city. Our plan is also, though, to run, uh, exhibits throughout the year, and so we will also, our goal, it has always been to open it up to the public as well, so we would let you all know when those hours would be, what exhibits are coming up. And then ultimately, um, the, within partnership with the city, if you, if the city, uh, wants to have an arts and culture type of related meeting there at the center, at our, uh, gallery, we're also, uh, partnering with the city on that. Uh, that's all, because it is a private gallery, we have limited staff and limited hours, it will all be kind of pre-approved, and we will work together on all of that, but we do have high hopes, uh, that we are able to share it as much as we can. And hopefully in the future, if we are able to maybe work together to secure funding and really kind of grow the effort, uh, we can broaden, uh, that support, that, um, availability to the public as well. Mm-hmm. Actually, Chair, I have a question or for staff or, uh, Ms. Berenice. Uh, the access or the entrance to, I'm looking at the site plan, uh, the entrance to the art gallery, will it be to drive through, uh, the Tesla entrance, uh, to, or, because wouldn't that be, you would enter, right, and go through the back?
Exactly. This is a shared access.
Okay, perfect. So there's a shared access. Okay. That's right. Thank you. Okay?
I have a question as well, regarding the same thing. For the entrance in the back, uh, how, how many people do you anticipate being in the shared art gallery space at the same time? Just because I know there's, uh, only a handful of parking back there, and as of right now, one ADA stall for parking, and all the ADA stalls are in the front of the building, so I was just wondering how, uh, what you're expecting for people, like, uh, turnouts and, uh, and alternative entrances, I guess, to the front, or anything like that?
Sure. Commissioner Lopez, if okay with you all, I'd like to invite my colleague, Luz Maria Chavez, uh, to come and answer that question. She's our, uh, Vice President of Facilities and can provide some additional information on that.
Good evening. Luz Maria Chavez, Vice President of Facilities for Altmed Health Services. So on the parking, we have also accessible parking in the front of the building, accessible also through an elevator, uh, to get to the second floor. There's also parking on the side of the building as well. So that's, we would use all three areas for parking and the elevator.
Any additional questions?
Uh, so just, just to clarify, uh, for the parking in front, they will have to come into the entrance to the front, correct?
Yes, they go in through the administrative office, uh, entrance, and then, uh, use the elevator to access the second floor.
Okay. Got it. And, and it's been, uh, I don't know if the plans are on here for the rest of the building, but, uh, there's adequate spacing and, and all that for, uh, any ADA accessible needs?
Yes, yes. We all, we meet all current ADA codes. Uh, we designed that building, the office space, in, uh, 2020. We opened our doors, and it was all per ADA standards.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think I just want to note for the record that, that as, as part of our approval or our, the discretionary approval, that these plans will still go through the regular building and safety process, whether it be reviewed, embedded by, uh, our, uh, fire departments and [inaudible].
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is a great question. Uh, the, the plans will, the structural, the improvement plans will go through the Building and Safety Division, and they will be checked per the current building code. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more comments or questions for Berenice? No? I just had one last thing to say, and, and you mentioned, you said something that struck a nerve with me, and you said that you have high hopes. We also have high hopes, so.
Love that. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Um, should we take the next speaker?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we do have four speaker cards. I will call them in order. Uh, first speaker is, uh, William Moreno. You will have three minutes. So by the time you reach the microphone, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
I'll try to be brief. Hi, everybody. William Moreno, um, District Four. My family has been here since the mid-sixties. I'm a proud graduate of Catwell Boys School, so I'm showing my age a little bit, but, um, I'm here to support the project, the Alta project. You know, I come from a family of arts folks. My dad was a graduate of Art Center. He went on to establish a pretty important advertising agency in Los Angeles, and now his personal art archives sit with the Smithsonian Museum of American History. So that's an important legacy, not only for the city, I think, those who know, but also for our family. I went on to be, become the Director of Two Museums, one in the city of San Francisco and the other in the, for the city of Claremont. So I'm really familiar with the inner workings of cultural entities. Since its inception, Altmed has had a history of supporting arts and regularly acquires art directly from the artist for its community-based collection, with a focus on Latino works. As you may know, Riverside has a Cheech Museum, which saw two hundred thousand visitors over the course of two years and generated twenty, twenty-nine million in ancillary financial benefit. Now, I'm not suggesting Alta will have that, it's probably gonna make Dr. Batista Blanch a little bit to see those kinds of numbers, but I think the potential is there, for sure. As, as somebody mentioned, this part of Los Angeles County is an art, is a desert. We are routinely ignored by LA County Arts Commission, who has millions of dollars to give, and they routine, they ignore most of the San Gabriel Valley, I'd say. So I think it's an opportunity on multiple levels. I'm convinced that my hope is this will bring pride and, um, interest to the arts, not only for, um, families, but particularly for their youth. I think that there's a gap there somewhere. Not everybody wants to chug down to downtown Los Angeles, nor do they want to go to Riverside. So I think, um, um, I'm happy to support it, I hope you will, and, um, that's not, let's put some civic pride behind this project, so, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Gonzalez.
Thank you. My name is Greg Gonzalez. I have lived in Montebello since nineteen seventy-five. I'm also a graduate of Catwell High School. Ms. Moreno, go Cardinals! A little later, not too much later. Um, I'm also here to support the Alta and look forward to the improvement of Montebello's cultural and artistic growth. Alta will add vibrancy, community, and culture through art. For this community in particular, the Latino and Chicano focus will provide a touchstone and a means to not only view and appreciate art, but to create it. You can measure a society by the way it supports schools, libraries, and culture. Here is our chance to support all three. Having lived here in the city for fifty years, um, this would be a particular triumph and source of pride for the city, which has been identified by all of you and many here as a desert of the arts. I've also been teaching high school art history for the last twenty years. I try to appreciate the value of artistic expression every day, and I try to teach that value of artistic expression. The word alta in Spanish means "high", of course. This is our chance to elevate our city. I urge the Planning Commission to support this project. Thank you for the important work that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Our next public speaker is Mauricio Ramos Aviles.
Good evening, Commissioners and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to thank you for your leadership and commitment to projects that uplift Montebello. Uh, my name is Mauricio Ramos. I'm, I'm here on behalf of Adventist Health and BiMemorial Montebello. I'm here tonight to voice my full support for Agenda Item Number Two, which is, which will bring the Alta project to Montebello. This is a project that truly affects or reflects who we are as a community and honors Montebello's deep cultural roots. Uh, it, it will celebrate Chicano and Latino arts and history, something that reflects the heart of, of the city. The Alta will build on Montebello's strong artistic traditions, from the downtown art walk to the local murals and the monuments, by creating a permanent home where those cultural expressions can flourish. Montebello is home to many of our patients, families, and staff, and we have witnessed how deeply the city values belonging and pride. Please approve Agenda Number Two and help make the Alta a reality, and thank you for your leadership and for supporting a project that will bring beauty, connection, and pride to the city of Montebello.
Thank you so much, Mauricio. Our, um, final public speaker will be Dr. Siraco Pinedo.
My name is Dr. Siraco Pinedo. Uh, my day job is I'm the President and the CEO of the Mexican-American Opportunity Foundation, a business here in the city of, of Montebello, and we're proud that this is our home. Um, it's, uh, I thank you for the opportunity to be able to, to share some words tonight, but first I want to acknowledge the work that you do as a planning commission. I happen to have served about nine or ten years on a planning commission, and I have a, a deep appreciation for the time that it takes, the commitment that it takes, and that, that corazón for our community, right? The decisions you make truly help to shape where families can not only live, but where they can celebrate, where they can learn, and they can be, become involved and engaged. So thank you for your commitment to service. I'm here to s- express my strong support for this particular project. The Alta project, uh, will not only create a beautiful space for art and culture, but it will also strengthen the spirit and the well-being of our community. Dolores Huerta once said, "Seeing yourself reflected brings you dignity", and that truth is powerful. Spaces like the Alta give children, families, and our elders the opportunity to see their stories, their culture, and their heritage reflected back to them with pride. This is not just about art on a wall, it's about dignity, identity, and connection across generations. And art also heals. It has the power to heal the heart, the mind, the body, and the soul. And at a time when our society is facing so much division, stress, and uncertainty, sp- spaces like the Alta are essential. They remind us of our shared humanity, and they give us a place to be able to find hope, resilience, and belonging. I happen to sit on the Board of the Riverside Art Museum, which is the parent organization for the Cheech, and I will tell you that the Independent Economic Impact Report that we commissioned, and you heard the, the figure earlier, twenty-nine million dollars in the first two years of operation. We found that a lot of our attendance is coming from outside the community, and while at first thought that might seem like, wait, is that what we want? Yes, that is absolutely what we want. Included in our, in our local attendance, that outside attendance is generating economic value in local businesses, restaurants, hotels, and we have found that businesses want to come to that city because of this space, and that can and should happen here, right here in the city of Montebello. Montebello can experience this same kind of transformation. The Alta will be a cultural anchor that celebrates who we are, heals and uplifts this community, and attracts visitors while boosting small businesses and generating new economic activity right here in our city. By approving the Alta, you're investing in both dignity and opportunity. You're helping our community see itself reflected in art and also building a healthier and stronger economic future for Montebello. Thank you for your leadership, for your commitment, and for your support of projects, especially this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chaco. That concludes our speaker curse. Thank you so much. In that case, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and bring the item back to the commission for discussion. Any thoughts, Commissioners?
Just a comment. Thank you. It seems like, uh, we're all on the same page in terms of, you know, uh, the excitement and the opportunity that this, um, you know, proposed development will bring to our city, so, um, it's nice to see everybody smiling and be happy about it.
Thank you. In that case, can I entertain a motion?
I'll go ahead. Sorry. I'll go ahead and, uh, motion, uh, the conditional use permit to allow the establishment and operation of a private art gallery within the Montebello Town Square Shopping Center, located at fourteen zero one North Montebello Boulevard, project site.
I'll second that.
We're actually doing the related environmental impact and the development agreement as well. There are three recommendations.
With the recommendations, it is recommended that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and take the following action. Adopt a resolution conditionally approving CUP number PC dash two zero two four dash zero zero one two dash CUP, to allow the establishment and operation of a private art gallery along with accessory storage spaces on the second floor of an existing commercial unit in the Montebello Town Square Shopping Center, located at fourteen zero one North Montebello Boulevard, and adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council approve Development Agreement Number Zero Three dash Two Four between the City of Montebello and Altmed Health Services Corporation, and making the related findings that the proposed project is consistent with the Montebello general plan, and determine and find that the project ENV number ten dash two four is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, Section One Five Three Zero One, Existing Facilities, and Section One Five Zero Six One B Three, Common Sense Exception.
Thank you, Commissioner Morales. Can we get a real call, please? Oh.
I was just gonna ask.
It's my second, um, it's still valid. Ditto to whatever she said.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuevas?
Aye.
Commissioner Morales?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Lomelli?
Aye.
And Chairperson Medina?
With high hopes, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. We're gonna go move on to the next item, which is, uh, any planning commission orals? Well, I, I can say that I'm happy to be back. We've been off for a few months now, so happy to see everybody. And with that, I guess we can adjourn. Thank you so much.